Good morning, welcome to the Montgomery County Commission formal session meeting for today, May the 6th. At this time I'm having the invocation by Vice Chairman Moore Ziegler and the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Costanza. If you would please rise.
Please bow your heads. Father God, we come to you today humbled to be your servant. We ask that every day you guard our hands, our minds, so that we can do what's right for the citizens of Montgomery County. But most of all, God, we ask that you take care of each citizen and you take care of Montgomery officials, so that we all can come together and know the beauty of Montgomery. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will now call the roll. Commissioner Harris.
Here.
Vice Chairman Moore Ziegler.
Present.
Commissioner Costanza.
Here.
Commissioner Sankey.
Present.
Chairman Singleton.
Here.
We have a call.
Okay, Kendall, keep me in order here, but we have a lot of presentations and recognitions for outstanding achievements by some of our sports teams. I'm gonna ask the District of Champions to come up again, Dan Harris. We've had multiple state champions in the side, the city limits of Montgomery and Montgomery County, and so far they've all been Dans this year. So Dan, if you want to come up, we're gonna do Trinity Girls first. The Trinity Presbyterian Girls, three-time state champions, thirty-one and four. A dynasty in girls' basketball has been established. So girls, if y'all want to come up and just stand in the front with us here.
Please come up. Again, this is getting to be a habit with me, and it's a great habit, because you are proud members not only of state championship for girls' basketball, but you are also members of the District of Champions, District One. And I'd like to really, really congratulate you on your accomplishments. I left my glasses, my close-up glasses at home. He's gonna read my close-up glasses. These are my faraway glasses.
Yeah, I'm not gonna read the whole thing. I will just touch on a couple of things. When you gave me the wrong, I got the wrong one. I got my mistake. I finna say I saw.
I can't see it.
Yeah, I know that. I can hardly see myself, man. Here it is, Trinity. Okay. I'm gonna just read the last, because there's a bunch of where-asses on here, but I'm gonna read the last couple of lines. "Now therefore be it resolved that the Montgomery County Commission does hereby proclaim May the 6th, 2025, as the Trinity Presbyterian Girls Basketball State Champions Day in Montgomery County, Alabama, in recognition of the historic achievements of the Trinity Presbyterian Girls Basketball Team and their well-deserved Class A 4A State Championship victory. Be it further resolved that a copy of this proclamation be presented to Trinity Presbyterian High School and entered to the official records of Montgomery County as a testament to their historic achievement." It's signed by all the commissioners. Commissioner Harris has the token for it.
In addition to that, we have Montgomery County Challenge Corns. We're gonna do it. Where are we doing?
We're going down or we standing up? Going down.
I don't know if you wanna make a mark.
I'm like me every day, I'm going down. You're going down.
I'm gonna ask each of you to give me your name and pass name, position, pass a picture. Start here.
I'm Chris Morris. And I'm Lisa Wood. And I'm Gar.
I'm Mary Smith. I'm a senior and I'm a point guard.
I'm Maya Smith. I'm a senior and I'm Gar.
I'm Lily Smith. I'm a freshman and I'm a guard.
Congratulations.
I'm Bryce Stewart. And I'm a manager. And I recognize some of these young ladies' names because Hitchcock Ward, I'm on that committee, so I don't know something else. I've been on it not only for athletic achievements, but your overall being very, very great people. So congratulations. Thank y'all. Congratulations.
The only thing I want to need you to do on this next one, and this is gonna be bad mistake, right?
Bad mistake.
Yeah. The only thing I want you to do on this next one is to read the last where-ass.
Right, okay.
Because everything else about this team, I either know, or somebody's gonna tell me what it is, you know. I don't know how many of you watched the first four that came, that was played in Dayton in this year's NCAA Championship Tournament, but there was a play, the last play of the game, that pushed us in the game against Auburn, pushed us to the game against Auburn. I understand that they called a timeout, I mean, I saw it, Coach called a timeout and called a play. This play, I don't know, Coach, you could've called it like that. Threw the ball, full court, caught it, and looked like, in the same move, looked like TJ had a hand on it, one other player had a hand on it, and boom, into the basket and sent us into the next game against Auburn. What a great game, a great shot, a great play. That play made it across the nation. You could see it on every network, every highlight that was done on the NCAA Championship. Not only was that a great play and maybe make that kind of history for the school and for the team, but it also just generated so much interest in the Alabama State University. How long has it been? Thirteen years since we had a championship? How long has it been?
Since 2011.
Since 2011. It was the first one. Last time, I was at the last one, you know, when we came out. We didn't have to play in. We didn't play the Dayton game. We played, I think we played Duke in the first game and Duke sent us home. I think they beat us by eighty points. Not really. But we played the next game and really, really represented well against Auburn University. It is indeed my pleasure to honor the Alabama State Men's Basketball Team this year with this proclamation and these challenge coins. Doug, will you read the last where-ass?
Now therefore be it resolved that the Montgomery County Commission does hereby proclaim May the 6th, 2025, as Alabama State University's Men's Basketball Day in Montgomery County, in recognition of the historic achievements of the ASU Men's Basketball Team and their first NCAA tournament win. Be it further resolved that a copy of this proclamation be presented at Alabama State University and entered to the official records of Montgomery County as a testament to their historic achievement, as on this sixth day of May.
I'm gonna ask the team and the coaches to come down.
And we can all stand in front of him. We can all come and stand in front of him.
Guys, we have with us today, we have with us today a brilliant father-son team. I gotta call them out. Tony Matlock, head coach of Alabama State, and his son, Tony, TJ Matlock. Also with us today is the athletic director for ASU, who actually moved the school in every sport to a different level, Dr. Jason Payton. Only one issue with Dr. Payton, he's a Q. Tony is a course of captains.
We work really good.
But that's true, Qs and captains can get along, can work well together, and create a winning team. And there's another person I would be remiss, standout from the University of Alabama, one of the best point guards in Alabama.
DJ.
DJ Jackson.
Eighteen years ago.
But I really, it's been a while since I've seen an Alabama State University team play together as well as just a bunch of guys. There were times when I wondered if it was gonna work out, but towards the end of the season, they came together at exactly the right time. When you had to win four, or five, or six, or seven in a row, you came through and you did it. And you did it in excellent style. TJ, we're gonna miss you. This guy played with the biggest heart. He's not that big, he's tall, but he's not that big. He follows the ball. The ball never got away from him. He's on the floor, he's everywhere behind the ball. TJ, we're gonna miss that also, we're gonna miss that shot. So I wish you well on your future endeavors. Guys, like I said, this is the best effort I've seen by an Alabama State University basketball team in years. You guys really came together, really played well, and congratulations on a well-deserved victory and some well-deserved recognition, a well-long-waited on recognition for the Alabama State University. Thank you so much.
Full disclosure, Dan talks about District of Champions. Alabama State University is not in your district.
It's in psychic district. But I'm the one calling on him to get the recognition. Cause I need the ASU.
That's what Costanza told us, the girl from Kathy, Kathy drove one of those black women. Before y'all got there, how proud he was. You can tell, proud of the office, and that's why Dan had to do this.
All right, congratulations, man. And in full disclosure, Alabama State is on Power Hero. Borderline. My district is borderline south by Finsley Avenue. There's only one street in between, I claim that. Congratulations, man.
I'm gonna be all claiming the ASU.
Do we have some challenge coins?
We get stadium.
Turn it, turn it, Charles, Denver.
What's that?
You gotta get tired, right? You didn't get lucky, you're lucky, man.
Yeah. I don't know. You said you're a brother, you know? I'm just saying, buddy, you're a brother, man.
Dan, you got one more. The Montgomery Academy Boys won the state championship this year in boys' basketball. What class? Forget it, 3A, 3A state champions, thirty-four and two record, correct? Montgomery Academy Boys.
Again, the District of Champions. MA is in the heart of the District of Champions, of District One, and, I mean, you're always winning championships. I don't know, is this the first year you won 3A for?
It's the first boys' basketball in history. First in history. I know you won football a couple times.
Yes. Well, on behalf of the Montgomery County Commission, congratulations on this win. Like, your team here?
No, they were taking AP exams.
AP exams, alright. Well, congratulations, and we have challenge coins for...
Jeremy Cannon.
You gonna read the?
Yeah, same thing. The Montgomery County Commission does hereby proclaim May the 6th, 2025, as Montgomery Academy Boys Basketball Team's State Champions Day in Montgomery County. And again, this is going to the official records of Montgomery County, like the other ones were, and a good friend of mine named Mark Hall, remember Mark from Heather, he coached St. James, and Mark, I gave Mark a lot of flack if I had, Joe beat him, but Mark told me, he said, you know, if we play really good, they'll beat us by thirty. We don't play very good, they're gonna beat us by fifty. So they had a paper.
Take one more picture.
Come on, guys, let's get one more picture of our partners.
Give me a comment, Mr. Smith.
Yeah, come on.
They just wouldn't answer. Okay, we love that. Yeah, this is the best people. Go on. Yeah. I know they'll be out of school, but we may have twenty-seven.
You're not in there. Let's see. You're not in there. Let's see. Kendall, I think we got them all in, so now it's time for the... Oh, yeah, I got Bike Club, that's, I'm sorry, Bike Club.
Yeah. That's not in my district.
It's in all of our districts, right? Do we have any representatives from the Bike Club here today? Come on down, come on down. Alright, come introduce yourself from the Montgomery Bicycle Club. We're gonna, come talk into the microphone, that way both people watching online know who you are, too.
Got you.
Hello, everybody. Can everybody hear me? My name is Nick Wright. I am the Vice President of the Montgomery Bicycle Club, and May is, by the American Legion of Bicycleists, May is Bike Month. So we've been doing this for a few years now, trying to plan as many bicycle events as we can in the month of May for the Montgomery Bicycle Club. So I would encourage everybody to get out on a bike and look at our website and join us for some of the events that we have upcoming.
Awesome. And along the same lines, as we have heard before, there are many where-asses in this, but the month of May, to be deemed by the Montgomery County Commission, proclaimed May as the Bike Month in Montgomery County encourages all citizens to participate in cycling activities, support local biking initiatives, and promote safe and biking practices throughout Montgomery County. So thank you for the work that you guys do, and I'll have to get a very strong bike, but I'm happy to participate. So, alright, May is Bike Month. We'll take a picture and everything.
Kendall, that's all, I think.
Yes.
Okay, public comments. I'm gonna ask Richard Bradford to come forward. Bridge Builders, just remind everybody that's coming, since we got a lot of presentations today, three minutes, you hear the buzzer go off, that kinda gives you time to let you know it's time to wrap up. Mr. Bradford.
Thank you, Commissioner. My name is Richard Bradford. I'm a board member for Bridge Builders Alabama. And I think y'all are all aware that we provide a leadership program for children across the entire county each year for juniors and seniors. Our Executive Director Florence Holland came to the Commission back in February requesting some funds, and my goal here today is to give you an update on where we are and what we're doing, and renew our request for funds. We had originally planned a class of twenty. We've now got thirty-nine high school juniors and seniors, and what our program does is really seek, I kinda compare it to a program I took part in, Emerge Montgomery, however many years ago, but it's a program that takes kids from all over the county and gives them an opportunity to meet one another where they wouldn't normally have that opportunity because of schooling or straight geography. Wonderful program for these guys. We provide leadership skills, financial management skills, and we really sincerely appreciate your past support and look forward to your continued support.
Thank you, Rich. Any questions for Richard?
What's the financial ask? I know that there was an ask previously, but where are you guys right now?
Originally, the ask was twenty thousand dollars.
Just Costanza, you've already donated.
I did.
Yeah.
What did you donate, Jess? What was that?
Five? And I've...
I know I gave, I don't know the number off the top of my head.
You gave four.
It was a four, four. Yeah, four, a fifth, yeah, that makes sense.
I've made a donation, it'll be on the next meeting.
Okay. Again, thank y'all.
What was yours, Doug?
I did two.
Alright, I'm gonna do five for my, yeah.
So Kendall, you're gonna do it today if you want to.
So that's what, that's what?
That's eleven.
Teresa?
That's eleven.
I just sent you an email, disregard that, cause we're doing it now.
Kendall? Yeah.
Thank you, Rich.
Thank you.
Frank Robertson, City of Montgomery.
Good morning, and thank you for having me for a brief moment. It's great to be here on this Day of Champions and Excellence, and we want to continue with that. One of the things that we want to make sure that we're doing is continue to partner with the county and make sure that you are involved and make sure that we are working together on a number of initiatives. This month, it's Small Business Month, and the reason why I'm here is just to tell you about a couple of the programs that we are doing and some of those things we've been doing collectively. First is Open on Main Street. We started a storefront grant yesterday that we're now accepting applications for. Mayor Reed announced this initiative. It's a fifty percent match of up to fifteen thousand dollars for first-floor retail, and it can cover a number of things, including exterior improvements, interior renovations, branding and marketing that's about signage along the windows, and technology upgrades, whether they want to upgrade a POS system or security cameras. This is the first, hopefully, of a number of initiatives. We want to go across the city with this, but we're starting right here on our Main Street area. The second thing I would bring your attention to is that the Small Business Awards. We are accepting nominations for small businesses, for Access Montgomery, S.B.O.S., the County Commission, which you have been a part of. We want to recognize small businesses in our areas. There'll be fourteen judge categories that spotlight the city's most impactful and innovative businesses. Our nominations are open at the website that's listed there, and the deadline to apply will be June 7th. Yesterday, you might have seen the news block by block. My downtown Montgomery ambassadors started officially, and they're doing a lot to clean and green and make our downtown safer. This has been a, they've already done work for the first two weeks, and they've already picked up two hundred pounds of trash, have done twenty blocks of power washing and among another other things. And so we are happy about this, the momentum that this is gonna help drive retail in our area and to make our downtown more hospitable. There is also wave finding that's coming, that's coming. We're doing more business engagement and reporting, but we want to make sure that we are part of engaging safety. I know that, listening earlier, safety continues to be a presence, but this is gonna be a part of that. We also want to acknowledge that we have a number of Small Business Month events. We're doing things with Strong Coffee, Strong Women, Entrepreneur One-on-One, Competitive Analysis, and a number of things, I won't go down the list, but we have a number of events that are happening. We just want to continue to partner with you. If you can continue to help us to share the information, to get businesses to engage, but again, I'll end as I started. We are happy, I've been here for eight months, I am thankful for the partnership with the county thus far, working both with Kendall, Regina on an administrative level, but working with you all has been just an honor, and know that we are continuing to move Montgomery, our city and our county forward. So thank you so much.
Frank, is this part of the ARPA money that?
Some of those things are, yes, yes.
Any questions for Frank?
Yeah, I have a question, sir. Ms. Chair, the, I understand that the city is standing up a housing department?
Yes.
And I'm just curious as to whether or not the County Commission might have a role or maybe relationship with you all as it relates to that.
I would say absolutely. So the city has elected in October to do that. We are in the final processes of hiring our first director for the department. That should happen at the end of this month, but we want to have meetings. I, you know, we cannot move housing forward if we don't work together on that, and so I will welcome a meeting that we can talk more about kind of what those synergies are. We are looking to do a housing trust, the funding to do, the gap funding and all types of things. So the answer is yes. We can't do it alone, we can't do it without you, and if we wanted to set up a meeting in June to talk more about that, we'd love to have that conversation.
Yeah, I saw the announcement. I noticed that it was announced as a city project, I think that was a joint project. Shouldn't it have been a city-county, that initiative?
Which project?
The business. Not block by block, but the money that went into it, the loans, the fifteen thousand loan, wasn't that part of ARPA money? As we just said.
Some of the programs are theirs.
Primarily the small business, small business S.B.O.S., and the rest of those programs.
It's a new one he's, this city is starting. It's a new program the city's starting.
So not, they're not...
Some of S.B.O.S.'s ours, the city county. This one's not.
So there's no county funds? No county funds with the money?
No, not for, no, no county funds will.
I misunderstood you.
On Main Street. No, that's fine. No county, I know there's a, I'm trying to do it within three minutes, I wanted to respect the time, but the very first initiative that I mentioned was a pilot project. We would love to expand it and kinda do it together, but this is a pilot project, we want to take it all over the city, but this first one was initiated through city funds only.
Okay. I mean, I was just wondering what the, Doug asked a question, and I thought you answered it.
Thank you.
Isn't that the question you asked, Doug?
Yeah, I asked if ARPA money was being used to help with these programs.
For some things, yeah. So S.B.O.S., yes, we worked together with county and city funding, but we, but again, I'll end with, we want to work more together. We want to make sure that we continue to leverage these dollars, and I think that we will go further with more conversations, and doing things like S.B.O.S., which has been a good city-county partnership, it has yielded results, and we want to go further with that.
Thanks, Frank.
Thank you so much.
Frank, are you gonna be here at the end of the meeting? Are you sticking around, or you gotta go?
I gotta go, because I have another meeting, but I would, whatever you need.
We're gonna be in touch. I just, I want to get you connected with a couple of folks and some ideas that have come out of this, and I mentioned another meeting ago, the invitation to be at the Black Economic Mobility Summit sparked a number of ideas, and since then I've had a number of conversations that really relate to some of the efforts that you guys are doing as well, and want to get some folks connected with you, and Steve and Kim Simmons, who are here right now, some ideas that we've talked about, education, small business, and families, and so we'll connect with you, but I just want to, just want to make sure that we do that.
I look forward to it, anytime. Thank you so much, everybody. Thank you for what you do.
Mr. McCullough, Montgomery County Community Corrections, Executive Director. Mr. McCullough, Montgomery County Community Corrections Executive Director.
Good morning, good morning, everyone, good morning. And it is an awesome day to be here, and I wanted to piggyback off what he said about the champions. Um, today we do have champions in the room, and I just want to say congratulations to you all. But I am the President Chairwoman for the Montgomery County Community Corrections Authority Board, and I'm here today to make an announcement that we have finally promoted slash filled the position of Executive Director for the Montgomery Community Corrections. This person has been holding it down for the last ten to eleven months and has been doing an awesome job in that position. And that person is none other than Mrs. Monica Harris. Come on down, Ms. Monica Harris. Ms. Harris, um. Let me also add that Ms. Harris will be the first female to hold this position down, and we are so grateful to have her, and I, I don't want to, um, leave out the great people that's gonna help her be great, her staff. I met the staff, and we have an awesome staff and position. They have been doing a wonderful job, and we're gonna look forward to some more great things in the future, and we are working on some other things. Uh, but I just wanted to make sure that, um, we let Mrs. Harris know that we are behind her, and we're, we're working on some good things, and we're looking forward to some awesome, uh, programs, um, other things that we've been discussing and working on. We're looking forward to those come to the forefront in the near future. So with the further ado, I just want to give you a congratulations, and so we are looking forward.
Good morning. First, I would like to thank God for growing me into the person I am today. To Mason and Macy, I love you guys with everything inside of me. To my family and friends, thanks for the unwavering support that you all always give me, no matter what I want to do in life, you all stand behind me. Thank you. To my staff, I can't thank you all enough, from where we have grown, where we are, and where we are continuing to grow and go forward. Uh, I look forward to continue to grow this program and partner with the different community leaders and local agencies to combat the problems in the communities. The goal is to continue to reduce the recidivism in our offenders and participate and give them the tools to become better citizens in our community. Thank you all again.
Did I miss anybody? Cause we had a little crowd come in at the last second. Okay. Kendall, that's it.
All right. Uh, item number one.
Oh, I got one stood up.
I'm not on the agenda, but I am, we're Monica Harris, and I would say that, um, I support that, that, that last position that spoke, and thank y'all for what y'all were accountable.
Thank you.
All right. Item number one, consider minutes of the regular meeting of April the fifteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Move for approval?
Second.
Motion carries.
Item number two, consider accounts payable checks and payroll checks.
Move for approval.
Need a second?
Second.
Motion carries.
Item number three, consider agreement with the Alabama Department of Transportation concerning funding for reserving Wallahatchee Road from Pike Road to State Route one-ten.
Move for approval.
Second. Motion carries.
Item number four, consider renewal of lease agreement with Williamson Properties Limited for purchase of clay gravel.
Move for approval.
Second. Oh, I, I think I accidentally hit move, I apologize.
Motion carries.
Item number five, consider amendment number two to contract with Diversified Companies LLC, DBA, Difficult Data.
Move for approval.
Second. Motion carries.
Item number six, consider budget change request number two.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion carries.
Item number seven, consider twenty twenty-five transportation alternatives program, trans, program grant application.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion carries.
Item number eight, consider bid award for the construction of a storm shelter at the Flatwood Community Center.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion carries.
Take that vote back.
He didn't win against it.
Yeah, he didn't win against it. Second name went against it.
I was trying to vote for it.
Tammy, will you record Commissioner Harris as a four?
There you go.
Item number nine, consider appointment of Aaron Shovel Turnham and reappointment of Janelle Belle Haynes to the Montgomery City County Public Library Board for terms expire in June first, twenty twenty-nine.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion carries.
Item number ten, consider miscellaneous appropriations to agencies to include fifteen hundred dollars from Commissioner Harris to Capa Fasai Godright Program, and two thousand dollars from Commissioner Moore Ziegler to bridge builders.
Move for approval.
Second. Motion carries.
Item number eleven, consider miscellaneous appropriations to educations to include fifteen hundred dollars from Commissioner Sankey to Percy L. Julian for teacher appreciation, thirty-five hundred dollars to Goodwin Junior for STEM program from Commissioner Costanza, four thousand dollars from Commissioner Costanza to Dalrada Elementary for Principal's Discretionary, and one thousand dollars from Commissioner Moore Ziegler to South Lawn Elementary.
Move for approval.
Second. Motion carries.
Item number twelve, consider miscellaneous appropriations from designated revenues to include five thousand dollars from Commissioner Harris for That's My Child, fifteen hundred dollars from Commissioner Sankey to Heavy Hearts, five thousand dollars from Commissioner Sankey to Royal Ambassadors, and five thousand dollars from Commissioner Harris and two thousand dollars from Chairman Singleton for Bridge Builders.
Move for approval.
Second. Motion carries.
Item number thirteen, consider travel and training requests for the commission, detention, engineering, finance, probate, and the sheriff.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion carries.
We have wave rule item to consider. Consider Montgomery County Sheriff's Office application for the twenty twenty-five Homeland Security Grant.
No objection? Move approval?
Second. Motion carries.
Those are all of our items, sir.
You got one more, Library Board.
We are, we just did, Alan. You go up to number nine. Tammy moved it before we got to the meeting.
All right, okay.
They were both on there.
Yeah.
Okay, good, okay, thank you, I'll make sure. Deputy Administrator?
Yes, sir, it's one of the few times I actually probably gonna have something to say. Um, I want to share the sheriff's sentiments, um, regarding the chairman's car accident last week. When the sheriff called, we were in a meeting in my office, and as I topped the hill, you saw the vehicle, and I didn't see the chairman, and looking at the vehicle, my heart started racing, and then I saw his white shirt and his red tie. And if you want a, a reaffirming of God's goodness, you see him with a white shirt on and a vehicle that flipped twice and not a speck of blood, nothing. The most he had was some glass in his shoe, and that was it. And so it's a stark reminder of the grace and mercy that God gives each of us each day, and I, I hope you do like we do, and we try to make the most of it, so. Chairman, it's a blessing, it's truly a blessing.
Thank you, Regina. Commissioner Champion.
Another, another day to celebrate the champions of District One. The district of champions. Nothing further, Mr. Chairman.
Vice Chairman Moore Ziegler.
Nothing to date, Chairman.
Commissioner Costanza.
I'm gonna have to learn that. Talk. No, I, I'll be briefer than usual. Um, just want to echo all the sentiments today, it's so nice to get to, to celebrate these young people. Um, in, in, this morning, we had a, a meeting with, with Dr. Byrd, the new superintendent of, of Montgomery Public Schools, and I want, I want the citizens to know, um, that there's been a lot of conversation, a lot of talk about the search for a superintendent and for what Montgomery Public Schools needs, and the, the one thing that I want Dr. Byrd to know is that he's the guy, he's here. And if we truly believe as much as we say that we do, and I know that this board does, um, then we're gonna work with him and through him, uh, to serve our students and to serve, uh, the teachers, the faculties, and the families of, of this, of this school system. And I'm excited, we, we, we only had about forty-five minutes together, and we were gonna continue those conversations, but he understands what our concerns are, and our concerns are your concerns. So that's why I bring this up, to the, to the citizens of Montgomery County, uh, particularly the parents of, of students in our schools, to the business owners who try to recruit our graduates, and to the military who needs to stay and should want to stay embedded in this community. Uh, we will continue to be a force for good. While we stayed in our lane in the hiring, we are gonna continue to be an advocate for our students now, uh, that we have a superintendent in place. And so, um, I echo the sentiments of each of our, my fellow commissioners, excellent ideas brought to the table today, and the concerns that we continue to hear as we meet with our principals in each of the schools and the families in our communities. Um, welcome to Dr. Byrd. So, congrats again to the Trinity Girls, Montgomery Catholic Flag Football, MA Boys Basketball, and, uh, having the ASU men's team here was really cool, that was super special, and, uh, very rarely do I feel short, that was awesome. Um, so congrats, and to the, to the, uh, Montgomery Bike Club on, on May. Uh, just a couple of the quick things, uh, I know that some of us have been invited, or we've all been invited, some of us are gonna participate down, downtown today with the, the I-Lee ceremony and, um, the work that Eris Beasley and her, her group has done in the schools to fight some of those things that we're talking about, the truancy, uh, getting kids to school, you know, that event is happening today, and so, uh, I think it started at eight or nine this morning, and then it'll run through twelve-thirty or one o'clock. I, I think I'm going down in the twelve to twelve-thirty range, we're all invited, um, I can get more details, but, uh, a really neat opportunity, uh, to, to share with the young people. I want to echo the sentiment that I shared with one of the, from one of the principals that I met with in, in one of the schools in District Three, she said, you know, I've been in a principal for twenty years, and the students have not changed a bit, they still need our love, they still need our compassion, they still need our kindness, and frankly, the, the difficulty are the adults in the room sometimes. So I challenge the adults in the room to be better, challenge the adults in the room to be committed to the right things, and, um, in all aspects of my professional life right now, one of the greatest challenges that I have is getting adults to get out of the way, including myself sometimes, but to get out of the way so that the, the child can be at the forefront of, whether it's the forefront of the honor, or at the forefront of the intervention, or whatever lies in between. And we've got a lot of opportunity to pour into our students and, uh, the young people of Montgomery County, and I don't, I don't want to miss any opportunities to do that, so, um, thankful for, for all those. And just as we, as we get to the end of the school year, if you know a teacher, just give them a hug and tell them that you love them, cause they are probably going crazy, and if you know the spouse of a teacher, give them a hug, because I know that their life is a little crazy right now. As we work towards graduation to all the graduating seniors, we will probably not meet again with a delayed meeting in May until everybody has gradu, graduated. Congratulations to all those, uh, in Montgomery Public Schools and the schools in the city of Montgomery and, uh, this community. Congratulations on, um, on the accomplishment of graduating, and wherever you may go, we're proud of you, that's all I got.
Do head of schools need a hug too? Cause sheriff's back there.
Head of schools need, need, need a hug? No, I, we got big shoulders, we got big shoulders. And Doug, I'm sorry, I didn't even know about the, the accident, but wow, what a, what a relief to now know that it was, it was so less serious, so.
Wear your seatbelts.
Yeah, that's, it's true, wear your seatbelts, my goodness. And call, and call the sheriff, so.
Commissioner Sankey.
Oh, I had something to say.
Forgot now?
But.
Did I shock you?
Yeah. No, um, we, we need to get our public relations director back so that, uh, we can have county commentaries by Justin Costanza. But no, we always appreciate your comments. No, I don't have anything, uh, Mr. Chairman, except, uh, Mr. Kendall, Mr. Anderson.
Yes, sir.
Um, the HMR Director, can you bring us up to date on where we are with?
HR Director.
Yes, sir, the HR.
Yes, sir, I'm reviewing applications as we speak. Um, I've started that process to review applications, we'll, I look to set up interviews by the end of this week, have interviews next week, and hopefully by first week in June, I hope to have a, uh, a recommendation to the commission for a hire, so, yes, sir.
And thank you, so, county attorney, are we?
That is out there, that job has not closed yet. Um, it got out there last week, um, to make sure, you know, we, we do what we can to cast a wide net sometimes on our own. I've sent that job to every judge in the courthouse and the county, uh, the court administrator, so that they can pass it out to the bar association and, you know, lawyers know lawyers, so want to make sure that goes out there as, as far as why. Um, public relations, that job is out there, that job is closed, we're waiting on the cert, certification list to come back from, uh, HRM, which probably will be in the next couple of days. From that point, we'll review and schedule applications and go through that process, and grants administrator Regina is reviewing applications.
Thank you, sir.
Those are the big ones that are kind of out there.
Appreciate that. I was just concerned about the, particularly the attorney, well, H, the, the HR director, in particular attorney, in terms of, you know, how we conduct business from day to day, are we okay in the absence of an attorney?
Yes, sir, we have, we have at least, um, we have a couple of people that are kind of handling things, that typically will handle those things anyway. Um, nothing has really risen or come in our door that is screams that we gotta get somebody to look at this, um, but, so right now, we, we have Ball and Ball that handles some things for us, um, Hope Hicks is, I'm not sure what firm she's with, she handles some things, of course, Kinda Walker still handles some things for us, so we've kind of got a team right now, and so hopefully we'll get an attorney in and we can kind of get back to that person handling all those things that are very pertinent to the county.
Thank you, thank you, sir.
Uh, county offices will be closed Monday, May the twenty-sixth, observance of Memorial Day. Reminder that our next meeting will be May the twenty-seventh, we will not meet on May the twentieth as usual, uh, because Montgomery Whitewater is receiving an award in Washington, DC for engineering, and there'll be some of the commission attending that event to represent, um, the commission. Alabama Power Company for the Commissioners Gathering, the Eagles Gala is May the seventh, tomorrow night at six o'clock at Montgomery Country Club. Sheriff's Office Golf Tournament is Thursday at Airhead Country Club, got some good eating out there, if you have time to stop by. Noon, uh, May the seventeenth, seven AM, noon, Veteran Fishing Day at, uh, Dean Park, and then May the fourteenth, from six to seven PM, MPD Police Memorial Ceremony on Ripley Street. If you've never been to that, that's really touching to go to that, so I would encourage you, it's open to the public, and they moved it tonight, used to be during the daytime. And then the River Region United Way Ribbon Cutting and Open House is May the sixteenth. So with that.
One last thing, Mr. Chairman. Um, one of our unfortunate news that we received late last week, one of our colonial reps, uh, Mr. Tarkington Dillard, um, fell ill and kind of been, we didn't know, unbeknownst to us, he fell ill, and unfortunately, he passed late last week. He, uh, for everybody who's listening or watching, if you, if you, you know him, is, he's the gentleman that you would come in and fill out all of your opening enrollment things, get your flex card straight, and get your insurances done. Unfortunately, he, he fell ill and passed, and so we just want to send our condolences to his family, and, you know, as, as somebody that's not necessarily of an employee of Montgomery County, somebody who comes in the doors and has familiarity with everyone, uh, we, he will certainly be missed, and, uh, we. we, he will certainly be missed, and we will just want to pray for his loved one and loved ones and his family during this time.
Thank you, Kendall, for that. I appreciate that. Can I entertain a motion to adjourn?
Second.
On favor, say aye.